We're underway here. It is June 21, 2021 at 7:30, and this is the City of Brainerd City Council Meeting, and I call the meeting to order. Mr. Burgman, please call the roll.
Erickson.
Here.
O'Day.
Here.
Stunek.
Here.
Johnson.
Here.
Pritchett.
Stingline.
Here.
Bevins.
Here.
And Bedeau.
Here.
Let's turn our mics on, and please rise for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Item number four is the approval of the agenda. PNF Chair Johnson, is there something we're going to take off your agenda tonight?
Yeah, I wanted to remove, we're not quite ready for it, so item number three, the resolution supporting a housing development would be removed from the agenda tonight, please. And then I'd move adoption of the rest.
Thank you. We have a motion to adopt the amended agendas or second.
Second.
Second by Stingline. We have a motion by Johnson, second by Stingline. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed, same sign. We are underway. Item five is a consent calendar. All matters listed are considered routine by the council. Will be enacted by one motion. There'll be no separate discussion of these items unless good cause is shown prior to the time the council adopts. And the motion to be adopted by roll call is our move to adopt the consent calendar.
So move.
Motion by Chief Stunek.
Second Johnson.
Second Johnson. Any discussion? Hearing none. Mr. Burgman, please call the roll.
Erickson.
Yes.
O'Day.
Yes.
Stunek.
Yes.
Johnson.
Yep.
Stingline.
Yes.
And Bevins.
Yes, that is adopted. Next up is item six, which is presentations, the 2020 audit presentation. I saw Mary here.
Yes.
There you are. You ready? I got her pen, I know she was here.
Thank you. Hold on one second here.
Please, you have to state your name.
Do we have a camera?
Who you're from.
Hey, my name is Mary Reedy. I'm with Clifton Larson Allen. I am the City of Brainerd auditor. I'm just waiting for Connie. We kind of tag teamed it.
We got it up here. We're good to go.
Good. You're going to stay back there?
Yep, I can come up there.
Okay. Okay, so audit report. The audit went very well this year. Able to get it turned around. June 30 is the deadline, so we have met that deadline. We'll get everything submitted to the state in a timely fashion. So in front of you, we have the PowerPoint. It's a little bit easier read than reading through the thick booklet that you probably already have, so enjoy reading that. If you have any questions, as you do, feel free to reach out to either myself or Connie. Always open to questions at any time. But we'll go ahead and just go through the PowerPoint. Stop us at any time if you have questions. It definitely can be an interactive presentation. So we'll start. So page two, just a few discussion items. Brainerd Public Utilities Audit Results. We'll go through the financial results, the city's required communication to the council, the audit results, some financial results, and then just other discussions, insights and observations that came from the audit. So Brainerd Public Utilities Audit Results, a clean opinion on the financial statements, internal controls that we tested, no findings noted there. And then Minnesota legal compliance, we also test, and they have no findings either. So very clean audit report. On page four, you can see their overall financial results. If you look, very similar to prior years. However, operating revenues did decrease from last year. That would be down to usage, due to usage. But if you look at the change in net position, so the second line up from that bottom, it's still positive 2.3 million there. So here, we just break down the assets and deferred outflows of resources that were presented in the audit. 2020 is on your far left, and then 2019 on your right. So cash went down from last year. Revenues decreased, we discussed, due to the usage. But overall, BPU had a positive cash flow from operations. Page six, this is net position, liabilities and deferred inflows of resources. So overall debt decreased, just making payments on the bonds that they have outstanding. No new debt was issued. And then two of the three departments, so we include all departments in one fund, and in the back of their statement, it's broken out. But two of those three departments did report a positive change in net position, and then water was the only one that had a slight loss of about 120,000. Okay, perfect. That was BPU. Page seven, some required communication to the city council. I talk about this every year. Our primary responsibility as auditors is write an opinion on the fairness of the financial statements presented today. We do review internal accounting controls. We want to make sure that the city has controls and that they're working. If they weren't working, we definitely let the council be aware of that. We don't test every transaction. We come in and do a few detail level transaction testing, and then a little bit higher testing. If anything looks out of ordinary, we definitely do a few more procedures on it. Significant accounting policies. There were no unusual transactions and no new standards, so if you were to compare this year's audit report to last year's, they would be fairly similar. Page eight, within the bound documents, there are some management judgments and accounting estimates, so remember as you go through there that those will be in there. No corrected or uncorrected adjustments, so the reports that the council is getting monthly for financial information is accurate. We don't come in and make adjustments at the end of the year. No disagreements with management. Page nine, no difficulties in counterperforming the audit. This year, we were able to be onsite. We did ask Connie if she felt comfortable with us coming in. We came in and performed everything. Last year, we did do it all offsite. It's just sometimes it's easier with that face-to-face to have that onsite time. Page 10, unmodified or a clean opinion on the basic financial statements. So that's the highest level of assurance that us as auditors can give. Okay, no complaints, findings noted over internal control. We did test the airport improvement project, so the city spent more than 750,000 of federal awards, so we had to go ahead and perform a single audit, a special test of those funds. When we calculated it out, we tested the airport improvement project. You had a large amount of CARES money that came through the airport, so we went ahead and tested that, even though you had some of your normal CARES funding as well. But with the airport receiving that money, we tested that. We had no findings there. Minnesota legal compliance, we just had one finding there. Electronic Fund Transfers Authority needs to be done annually, so Connie will get that included in the packet once a year.
We actually did it for 2021, so we should get that removed in 2021, and it should not be on there going forward.
Perfect. Okay.
Slide 11 talks about the city's financial results. This is the general public safety, streets and park and rec fund balances. These are the working funds that we call. The revenues exceeded expenditures in 2020. We actually budgeted for revenues to exceed expenditures by about $87,000. We had 102,000, that was for to offset budget increases in the future, and then 15,000 to use our fund balance because it was an election year. So we were budgeting for revenues to exceed expenditures, and they did, but more about $114,000 after the change in our fund balance policy. The fund balance is approximately 4,865,000. Approximately 4,461 is unassigned and can be used for operations, and that's what we use to look at our fund balance policy when we want it to be the 35% to 50% balance. Operating expenditures were about 10,400,000, and we are at 42% of our 2021 budgeted expenditures in unassigned fund balance. We changed our fund balance policy early in 2020 so that it was looking at the next year's budget rather than looking behind, because we need to make sure we have enough fund balance at the end of the year to cover those expenses for the first six months and the year following. If we go to slide 11, this just depicts our budget versus actual. There's not a lot of significant changes between the budget versus actual. Most of them are within 1% with the exception of the charges for services. We did reduce our liquor license fees due to COVID, as well as we didn't have nearly as much revenue from the park program since they were canceled as well due to COVID. We go to slide 13. This is the expenditure proportion, expenditure, look at budget versus actual. Capital outlay is different in actual versus how we budget for it. We budget those payments to be a monthly operating expense, but for GAZB, we have to report it as capital outlay. I really don't think we could budget any differently for it. We're covering those cash payments. It's just the way it has to be reported for GAZB that makes it look like it's capital outlay in the end. Also, public safety is quite different than budget, and that was because we were not fully staffed at the 27 sworn officers. Slide 14, this is going to be different than what was in your packet. We realized that there was a mistake when we were reviewing this. But really, what I want to point out here, this is just the numbers for the information that was in the graph. But if we look at, for example, I always like to look at the transfers in that are in the working funds and the public safety, the parks and the street. That tells you how those individual funds operated. So you can see for public safety, we had a transfers in of about $122,000. However, this was not for operations, this was for severance payouts. So we reserve about $50,000 in the general fund to pay for severance, because we don't budget for when people are going to leave and we're paying out their sick and vacation. So that is what that number represents. The public safety fund was under budget. Parks, there's really no difference. They were under budget. That $400 was a capital in and out. However, streets was over budget, and that was due to the snow removal. We can't predict when the snow is going to happen, and that it happens on Saturdays and Sundays and not Monday through Fridays. The next slide, slide 16. This is where it's the OSAs. Back one slide, Sean, if you would. This talks about the Office of State Auditor's office wants us to have 182 days in our fund balance. You can see that we are doing very, very well with our fund balance. The next slide lists out our total revenues by type. Our intergovernmental, those are LGA, our CARES funding, state aid funds that come in to do our roads. The charges for services, you see a large increase in 2019 and then a decrease in 2020. You know, we still were budgeting for our permit revenue from our schools projects. However, this shows the decrease in our charges for services that we had for liquor license as well as the park fees as well. You know, that we decreased those because of COVID, so that explains the increase in one year and the decrease in the next. If we look at total expenditures, this again depends on the projects. Capital outlay is the one that's the outlying expectation there, but that again depends on the roads that we're doing and the projects, the dollar amount of the projects. Finally, then, well, almost, finally, we have the debt service versus total cash available. We talked about this at the personnel and finance level, just that we need to have enough cash at the end of December to make that first February 2020, 2021 debt payment. And at the end of the year, we had about 2.2 million, and our debt payments were about 1.4, so we had it covered. I think we had such a large increase in the cash, well, I know we had large increase in the cash because we received more prepayments and special assessments than what we anticipated. So when we kind of go through that debt levy calculation, you can see that we do have enough cash to cover our payments, and that's why we're proposing to reduce our debt levy for future years as well. Total city debt. So next slide. This shows the different types of debt that we have, which we also talked about at the PNF meeting. The GO, the GO revenue bonds are the ones that, only ones that we don't levy for. We also don't levy for capital leases, compensated absences as well. Those we just pay as we go and not actually levy for them. Finally, we have the enterprise funds. Nothing really to note with the enterprise funds. The sanitary sewer numbers do reflect the settlement with Tom's backhoe on the airport extension project, so those are reflected in there. So I think that is why we have a positive increase, was because we are, we took already what we're going to have to pay him off of that, the change in deduction.
All right, May. Perfect. And I'll wrap it up here. Just some insights and observations from the audit. So overall, audit results are positive. No findings on the single audit, like we talked about. State reporting form and the GFOA certificate, which you get annually, will be submitted by June 30, when they're due. Fund balance reserves, your operating funds, so you, you know, as Connie mentioned, all four of those get combined. And a while ago, we combined those four all right on the face of the financial, so you can just look at them, and they're all back-to-back there, a little bit easier to look at. Fund balance, talked about at 42% of the 2021 budgeted expenditures. Policy is to have 35% to 50%, and then just allow us fund balance to grow 1% per year. So it was 41 last year, it's 42 this year.
And on the consent calendar, we did have the transfer to the capital fund, and that's for our fund balance policy. So it was a half a million dollars that's going into our capital fund project.
Are taxes were a half a million dollars too high?
Based on budget, yes.
Okay. Keep that in mind.
Thank you, Chairman Johnson.
I'll say it can go as quickly as it comes, so. So the revolving loan fund, just want to hit on that, had positive change in fund balance. You received about 174,000 in grant money, and you spent about 126. Debt service fund has restricted fund balance, approximately 2.3 million expenditures of 1.4, like Connie was saying. Capital projects fund has an increase, has assigned fund balance of about 4 million with expenditures of about 7.6 million in there. So 994,000 of that within capital projects is actually restricted, and that's due to the bond that was issued has not been fully spent as of the end of the year.
That's, excuse me, sorry, that's the memorial park project that we delayed the construction, so we should see that being used up in 2021.
Yep, and it just sits in restricted because it can only be paid for those costs, or you have to pay it back to the debt service fund. So that portion is restricted. And then approximately about 4.6 million of transfers in, taxes related, and intergovernmental grants help pay for your road projects right now. So overall, positive results for the city. In comparison to other cities that I've done as well, a lot of them cut costs, and so quite a few cities actually ended up positive, as the City of Brainerd did, which was kind of a surprise for a lot of them, just with COVID and everything, they didn't know what was going to happen. So positive, you guys were able to, you know, start early, save on your expenditures in the long run, and come out on top with everything that happened. Okay. I didn't know if there are any other follow-up questions?
Any questions of our finance department or our auditor? Any questions? Thank you very much. I know it doesn't say this, Connie, but in the past, we've done this. I'd like to do it now. I'd like to accept, have the council accept the audit, if it's all right. So is there a motion to accept the audit as presented?
So move.
Motion by Stunek, second by Stingline. Any discussion? Hearing none. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed, same sign. Thank you both. Next up is council committee report, 7A, as Personal and Finance Committee Chairman, Gabe Johnson.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. With the amended agenda, we have three items, the first of which is the authorize the purchase of sesquicentennial dispatch wrap. And the motion is to authorize the purchase of the dispatch wrap, an additional insertion in the Echoland shopper, and the purchase of 1,000 loose wraps for a total cost of $1,325 to come out of the council special projects budgeted item, and I so move.
Second.
We have a motion by Johnson, second by Stunek. Any discussion? Seeing none, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed, same sign. That motion carries. Please continue.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. The second item is to consider the modification of wages for 2021 temporary employees. We have two actions coming out of committee. The first of which is a motion to approve a wage adjustment for Eric Desmith to $14 an hour effective June 22, 2021, and I so move.
Second.
Motion by Johnson, second by Stingline. Any discussion? Mr. Johnson.
So Eric is currently not paid $14 an hour, but the person he is working next to is paid $14 an hour, and we just thought it'd be fair to pay two individuals doing the same work the same wage.
Excellent. Any other discussion? Seeing none, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed, same sign. That motion carries. Please proceed.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. The second item is to move, I move to adjust the wage to $14 per hour as of tomorrow for all of our interns and police department community service officers, and I so move.
Second.
We have a motion by Johnson, second by Stingline. Any discussion? Chairman Johnson.
If you look at page 82 in the agenda, there's a spreadsheet that lists all of our interns and the CSOs we have. Some of them are already at 14 or above, some are not, mostly in the police department. Overall, this looks like it'll affect us by about $5,800 in the negative from where we think we are now. The majority of it is coming out of the police department and the CSOs and the intern, so that fund has plenty of money to absorb the pay increases, and the other pay increases are hundreds of dollars that the other funds will be able to absorb as well.
We haven't voted on that one yet.
No.
No, okay. Any other discussion? Hearing none, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed, same sign. That motion carries. Please proceed.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. And the final item is informational only. It starts at page 85 on the agenda, and Connie put together a bunch of terrific information about our debt levy and the history of the debt levy and where it looks going forward. And just to summarize it, it looks like we will be decreasing, as of right now, it looks like the debt levy going into 2022 will be decreased to about $831,175, which is about, what, $81,000 less than last year. And if you look at this spreadsheet she has on page 88, it is the lowest inflation-adjusted lowest debt levy the City of Brainerd has had in over 15 years. If you look back to 2016 is where it maxed out, and the debt levy was $2,760,000. Over the past five years, a number of issuances have fallen off, and we haven't gone out and taken out a bunch of random debt, so we are at a low point, and the debt levy is looking good to be $831,175. That's just informational, and that's the end of my report.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. We will move on to item 7B, Safety and Public Works Committee Chairman, Michael Day.
Thank you, Mr. President. We have a nine-item agenda for Safety and Public Works. The first four having to do with the transit system in our town, and so we'll start with those. Number one is a resolution authorizing an agreement with the state of Minnesota to provide public transportation services in the year 2022. The motion coming out of committee is to recommend adopting the attached resolution as proposed to allow proper signatures on the grant agreement with the state of Minnesota, and I so move.
Second.
We have a motion by O'Day, second by Erickson, to adopt the resolution. Is there any discussion? Chairman O'Day?
This is nothing new. It sounds like this is something that comes up every few years when we have to adopt a new contract. It basically says that the state of Minnesota will help out with 80% of the, 80% of the capital costs and 85% of the total operating costs for our transit system. Of that remaining 15%, Brainerd will pay 46% of that. So when it breaks down, the state helps us cover a lot through this resolution.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Any other discussions? Hearing none. Mr. Burgman, please call the roll.
Erickson.
Yes.
O'Day.
Yes.
Stunek.
Yes.
Johnson.
Yes.
Stingline.
Yes.
And Bevins.
Yes, that resolution is adopted. Please proceed.
Item number two was to consider Brainerd and Crow Wing County Public Transit Office lease for 2022. The recommendation coming out of committee was to keep our office in City Hall. We did increase the cost from $645, $645 a month to $660 per month based on a recommendation from the TAC committee, and I so move.
Second.
We have a motion by O'Day, second by Erickson. Any discussion? Seeing none, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed, same sign. That motion carries. Please proceed.
Item number three is to consider product, productive alternatives, the third-party contract agreement extension for the month of July 2021, and I so move.
I have a motion by O'Day.
Second.
Second by Erickson. Any discussion?
Yeah, this is a, yeah, please. This is a extension of who is already operating our transit system. We just, we just need another month to figure out, one, who we're going to have take over the system, and give them the time that they need to get the people in place. And, did I already make a motion?
You did.
I did, yeah. That was pretty much it.
Thank you. Any further discussion on the extending one month for productive alternatives? Hearing none, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed, same sign. That motion carries. Please proceed.
Item number four, this is the item we spent most of our time on in committee. This is to consider Brainerd and Crow Wing County Public Transit third-party contractor proposal. After a lot of discussion in our committee meeting and hearing both sides, hearing arguments from both sides, the committee had a motion to follow up with the recommendation from the TAC committee and staff to approve the award of the third-party operation contract for Brainerd and Crow Wing County Public Transit to Blue Earth Blue Sky Jefferson Lines per the above TAC recommendation listed in your agenda, and I so move.
Motion by O'Day is our second.
Second.
Second by Erickson. Any discussion? Well, let's start with Chairman O'Day.
So I didn't necessarily want to make this motion. I wanted to leave this up to maybe talk about this a little bit more in depth, because it is a, it is a complicated situation. We have, we have the local guy versus the out-of-town guy. The local guy has a lower bid. The out-of-town guy has a higher bid. What it came down to was the TAC committee evaluated each proposal. One proposal was apparently much better than the other proposal, to the point where they decided it was worth the extra money. Now, when you come down to it, that's debatable, and that's what we're here to talk about tonight. Mr. Erickson did motion to approve the recommendation, and I did second it. There was only two of us in the meeting tonight. No one else could make a motion. I could have not seconded it, but I did, because I wanted to bring a recommendation to the council, but I expect there is going to be some discussion on the subject.
Okay. Ted.
Yeah, I'll jump in. I'm the council liaison to that committee, and I wasn't at that meeting, but I did review both of the proposals. I spoke to other members of the committee and staff, and I do agree with the recommendation out of the TAC, the four-to-one vote to approve Jefferson Lines. Again, I looked at the, both the applications, and I did see the stark contrast in the two applications. In my opinion, when you're evaluating proposals, the application's everything. You look at, you know, what is presented in the application. You could have a great project, but if that doesn't come through to a committee who may not be familiar with, you know, what services are being offered, that has to be properly communicated. There was elements in the one application that were not included, and that's concerning. Staff followed up with them, and I don't think it was ever fully resolved. And so I guess with all of that said, you know, I think the one application was superior, and I do, I understand the concerns about local procurement versus, you know, I guess non-local, you could say, and the higher cost. But as one member said during the discussion, you know, these things cost money, and unfortunately, these are services that we provide our residents, and, you know, again, I think the, for me, it comes down to the applications and what's communicated in those applications, and the one, I think, was far superior. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other discussion? Chairman Johnson.
Yeah, I guess I just have a couple of questions. You know, I, I understand the benefits of wanting to support local businesses, but I don't think that would be a motivating factor for a vote if the, if the bid prices were 50% different, which they are in this case, but they're 50% different in the opposite way, where the local guy is the low bidder by a significant amount, 1.26 million dollars over three years. So I guess to support this motion, I would have to have a better understanding of what is, what is being provided that's worth 1.2 million dollars from the high bidder that we couldn't, that we're not getting or couldn't possibly get from the low bidder. First question. Second question is, Brainerd Bus Lines is...
Second question is, Brainerd Bus Lines has largely been the public transit provider over time, over history, not this current contract holder, but they have held it in the past and they are local. Blue Earth Blue Sky has not held the contract and they may decide they don't like it and they may be gone in 2025. What do we do in three years if we award this to Blue Earth Blue Sky and they decide it's just servicing Brainerd is not for them? So I guess that's my two questions that hopefully somebody could answer.
Mr. Chair, can you answer those questions?
I believe we have people here that can answer those questions better than me.
Staff members?
Staff member Paul Sandy was one. We also have a chair from the TAC committee, Jeff Czazak, present.
How about Mr. Stone?
Mr. Stone? Yes, we also have Andy Stone here. He has, he has some experience with working with Reichert in the past as well as extensive knowledge.
Mr. Stone, can you answer those questions of Mr. Johnson? Or can you make the effort? Mr. Johnson, can you restate the questions one at a time?
You just want the first one first?
Yeah, let's do the first one. Please come forward, state your name and position.
Members of the council, I'm Andy Stone. I'm your transit coordinator and I've been employed here since 2014. Yes, I have lived through Reichert productive alternatives and now we are fine to get ourselves again in no man's land. As a staff employee, I'm always trying to do what's best for our community. Sometimes that might mean financial. Sometimes that might mean services. In the back of my mind, I always think that a community needs to decide, does it want a police department? Does it want a fire department? Does it want a transit department? If we want those services, I think it's our responsibility to put our foot forward, our best foot forward and not shortchange our, our residents. Is Jefferson worth it? I don't know these people. I'm looking at a proposal just like was mentioned here. I know their reputation within the state. Again, I'm a staff person, you're the council. I, I, I want to try to help you. I, I don't know what you're looking for from me.
I could have Mr. Johnson restate exactly his first question.
Sure. Okay, my first question, and I can elaborate why I'm asking, but my first question is, why are we going with the bidder who bid fifty percent, over fifty percent higher? The difference is one point two six million dollars over three years.
I don't know if that's a fair question of him. He didn't vote.
No, no, but I'm just saying, so the question is, what are the services that are being provided to us that...
Thank you for...
That justify one point two million extra taxpayer or ratepayer dollars?
If you look at the budget proposals, there's three main categories. One is dispatcher wages, one is driver wages, and one is overhead management fees. If you look at those three bucks, buckets, the one that's really high is driver wages. And in questioning, in discussing with Jefferson, they intend to pay the drivers quite a bit more money. In our society right now, it's tough to maintain good employees. Do I think it's wise to pay a little more for a better person? Yes, I do. They also include in their proposal an onsite manager, which has always been required of the specifications of the RFP, but has never been a hundred percent deployed or executed by the third-party contractor, which means there's a lot of gaps between what we as a city or me as a staff person is looking for and trying to get it accomplished through people that aren't our employees. There's a major disconnect. I expect with that intermediary there that we will accomplish bigger and better things. In my mind, that's the key difference here is, is the wage number.
Does that answer your question?
It's an answer.
It is an answer. Okay. Now, hold on, we got one staff member at a time. Okay, we'll start with Andy. That's who you wanted to answer these questions when I sent you the email, right? Okay, Mr. Johnson?
Well, and just my second question was more rhetorical. I mean, just what are we going to do in 2025 if Blue Earth Blue Sky decides Brainerd isn't the service they want to provide or they don't like working with the city of Brainerd? After we've told Reichert, I don't care if you're fifty percent less, we don't want to work with you, what do we do as a city? It's more rhetorical than getting an answer tonight.
Still a good question.
Still a good question. I'm not sure I'm the one that can answer it. I don't have a crystal ball. But I can tell you, we had high hopes for our current contractor. But then COVID hit and they want to refocus, you know, on their principal business. Yes, things change. I am glad I don't do the weather, you know, day by day. I've got to make sure we get all of our riders picked up and dropped off safely and, you know, in, in good shape and collect enough fares and have a few, few accidents so that we can meet our budget and make sure I get funding from the state. And so there's all these other duties besides actually driving the bus that we rely on somebody else to do. Will they continue to do it? Perhaps you'd want to question them directly. I think there's a representative in the back here from the company that could tell you the history of their company. I mean, I have my opinion, but if you want assurances, I'm, ask, ask the guy selling the horse, you know?
Okay. Don't move.
Does that help?
Well, I'm going to ask Chairman Johnson if it helps and then I'm going to ask if he's got any more questions for you. And then I know I've got questions for you. And then we're all going to ask questions of Paul Sandy next, okay?
Happy to be here.
All right. You look good.
I'll get a question of Paul too.
Yeah, well, we're going to do Andy first so he can go sit down.
Okay, yeah, so I have no other questions. These two questions stand for anybody who wants to answer and if I find sufficient enough answers have come forward, I may support the motion. As of now, I don't have a reason to. I have no more other questions for Andy.
Thank you. Any questions of Andy? I, seeing none, I have none, Andy, and we're going to let you go sit down.
Thank you, sir.
But I have the, I have the, the one to me that's obvious. And I believe you're the only one who can answer this. Can Reichert do the job?
All I'd say is look at history. Why did we change once before?
Productive alternatives is less money. I was on the council. That's why we changed.
That's why you changed?
Can Reichert do the job? In your opinion?
Can a smart car get me to Florida? Maybe. Is that how I'm going to travel? No. That's not how I roll.
Okay, so you're going to spend more money and do something different? You see where this is?
I think we can cover our costs. Has, when's the last time transit levied the board or the community for money? Been a long time.
That is a great question that probably should go to PNF for another day.
Two thousand and two.
My point, Andy, is there's always possible things that we can spend more money on that will do the job nicer, better, more comfortable. But sometimes we can't afford that. Or sometimes we choose not to spend the money. And as long as there's no detriment to service, hence my question, can Reichert do the job? Your indirect answer to me is yes, they can, just not in the fashion that you would like. That's what I heard you say. I get that. I like bigger, better, more luxurious, but I don't always want to pay for it. And that's my, that was the point of my question. Thank you for sort of skirting around it, but at least someone answering it. Okay, that's all the questions I have for Andy. Any, any other questions? Thanks, have a seat. Paul Sandy, thanks for being patient. We're going right back. You had an answer, something you wanted to add to Chairman Johnson's questions, please.
Yeah, and I, so this came up, so once we went through this process with the Transportation Advisory Committee, we had the opportunity to sit down with Jefferson Lines being the preferred vendor from the TAC and talk over their cost proposal. And one of the items that came up that the TAC brought up was this insurance line item. There is an insurance line item in, in Jefferson's proposal at a rate of about ninety thousand dollars per year that is related to commercial automobile liability insurance. Historically, the city has carried this insurance for our buses because we own them. However, we do not operate them. The question came down and we asked of our insurance provider of who would be liable in a catastrophic event if we were to have that? For example, an accident that, that kills somebody or does something of that nature? While we don't want that to happen, would, what would the city be on the hook for? And we have a statutory limit, a tort cap, I think it's what it's called, of about two million dollars, Joe, I think? Two million dollars. Part of that, so once our limit is gone, somebody else's insurance has to kick in and that's why that is a requirement of the proposal. The proposal does require that the contractor carry commercial automobile liability insurance because that would be on the hook next in a, in an event of a catastrophic collision. In review of both proposals, Brainerd Bus Lines does not have that in their proposal. And that is something that Jefferson did pick up on. That is another item that is in the proposal that was required. The vendor that these, the TAC selected did provide that in their estimate while the, the second proposal did not. So that is a ninety thousand dollar line item per year that we should have been paying for a long time ago that, that bus driver was, or that company was not providing us.
Thank you. I got to do the same thing to you I did to Paul. We're going to go right down the line.
Just a clarification of my comment. It's one point five million, not two million. That's it.
Super. Okay, Paul Sandy's on the hot seat. Is there any questions for Paul? On, Chief Stunick?
I have one. So am I hearing you say that Reichert does not have insurance?
They don't have, listed in their cost proposal, the insurance that they are, they should have as part of their costs in that proposal. The commercial general auto liability insurance is not in their proposal.
So if something would have happened, say, six months ago, we could have been on the hook for something already?
Up to the statutory limit.
Up to the statutory limit.
Yeah.
Thank you. Any other questions of Paul Sandy?
I have one.
Yes, Ted?
Well, I believe you said that in their proposal, they had a dedicated staff, kind of liaison, but it's dedicated and that hasn't been in the past.
Andy, yeah, thank you. Andy kind of alluded to that. When we had both Brainerd Bus Lines and productive alternatives, they were coming into that with people that already had a full-time position at their current job. And transit was kind of the, the second, the secondary thing. That's what we saw. What, what Jefferson showed in their proposal along with what was, you know, identified through our conversation with them is that they intend on hiring somebody. And that's where a large majority of that wage increase is for that, that driver wage. So while they're also paying their drivers more, they intend on having a full-time dedicated manager to ensure that the big thing with this contract is compliance with our contract with the state of Minnesota. If the, the contractor that's providing the service is out of compliance with our contract, we're more than likely out of compliance with the state of Minnesota's contract. And that's where, what the proposal has in for, for what they're going to provide becomes a contractual document in nature. What Jefferson says they're going to propose becomes contractual in nature.
Thank you. Any other questions? Chairman Johnson?
Well, Mr. Chair, I don't know if it's a question of Paul or if you're going to, if you're going to put Connie on the hot seat because now I have some financial questions.
Well, let's stick with Paul.
Should I ask Paul my financial question?
Sure, and then Connie will get a little chance to hear it first and, but we'll certainly, we'll certainly put Connie up next.
Yeah, so it's obvious this is, like I said, one point two million dollars over three years more expensive. That's paid by either levy dollars. As Andy alluded to, that maybe we should start levying the general taxpayers for bus service or ratepayers. Right now, I can get a ride from my house to Cub Foods for a dollar, a dollar fifty? I don't know. Hypothetically, less than five dollars. If we have to pay another one point two million dollars every three years, an extra four hundred thousand dollars a year, what, what's that going to do to our rates? Or are we going to be asking for a levy for transit in the near future? Because that's a, that's a hard no from this seat.
I can answer that. So that, you have to look at not the total overall. It's fifteen percent and what Brainerd shares is forty-six percent of the fifteen percent. So the increased cost over our current contract per year is about thirty-three thousand dollars. Twenty twenty-two, as you read in my memo, twenty twenty-two is fully covered by American Rescue Plan dollars. The, that allows us to bank revenues from fares for the next two years and allows the TAC to look into the future and make adjustments if they're necessary. We don't intend on levying dollars. We haven't done that since two thousand and two. And I don't think the intention of the TAC is to do so. I think the intention of the TAC would be to adjust fares to a point that's acceptable and, and cover the costs using both fares and our reserve account, which is right around two hundred thousand dollars right now.
Reserves is the long-term answer.
Mr. Johnson, anything else?
Thank you, Kelly.
Okay. Any other questions of Mr. Sandy? So we're not just hopping around. I, I have one and it kind of alludes to what Chief Stunick had brought up. You, you were very clear that insurance is necessary and was part of the bid process, the secondary insurance that was incomplete by one of the bidders. Can you just hit the highlights as to, and we've heard about this incomplete bid and we read some of the notes, what were some of the other things that were missing? Can you hit the highlights of those?
I do have it opened. So you guys received the email string from Brainerd Bus Lines from our transit department related to the items that they were missing in the first proposal. The highlights are, we sent the proposal, must submit the following information. How the contractor proposes to provide managerial operation dispatching services for the public transit system as outlined in the specifications, including but not limited to, limited to relevant fare collection experience, training program for all personnel, safety, security, and risk management plan, qualifications of proposed agency and personnel, more specifically qualifications and experience of all proposed administrative supervisory management personnel, and an organizational chart. And finally, under the maintenance and equipment plan, the safety record of their organization. Upon that, they submitted everything except for a safety record. There was some creative ideas offered to improve maintenance, safety, and equipment procedures. And there's a financial workbook attachment that should come along with their proposal that they did not provide. And I think, you know, our chair too can speak to the reasoning why he did not score along with one other member of the TAC, why they did not score the proposals.
Right. We're not going to invite him to the floor right now though. We have a motion in a second. We're just asking for clarification from the council. And of course, the last question of you, Mr. Sandy, and you haven't mentioned this, was there not in one of the proposals, a, an instance to move the transit office, the Reichert proposal?
There was a reference made to that Brainerd Bus Lines reserves the right to move the transit location to a location in Brainerd or Baxter, which was not part of the proposal documents that was inserted by the proposer.
Thank you. Okay. So at this point, we have a motion, we have a second, we've got all kinds of staff that has provided clarification and answered your questions. Is there any other questions of staff that anybody has? Okay.
I just have a procedural question. Yeah. But I, you know.
Yeah, go ahead.
May I?
Yeah.
My, my question was more so about the procedure of this and that it sounded like we were going to be renegotiating some aspects of a contract. Is that, is that true or not true? Because I, I'm just a little concerned about that in terms of how that works when we have two bids and then we would be renegotiating a portion of one bid after selecting it.
I would prefer to refer to the motioner because I did not hear any... I would prefer to refer to the motioner, because I did not hear anything about renegotiating any bids in his motion.
Correct.
Mr. Motioner.
Once, yeah, once, once the Transit Advisory Committee had selected a proposal, they then moved into negotiations. So they started talks of negotiations over certain prices, what the cost was really going to be. That was the main point of negotiation. After going through everything, they, they really realized that they weren't able to move the needle much in either direction. As far as, that was what I wanted to do. I wanted to move forward and have some negotiations regarding both parties. But from the sounds of it, you have to have the Transit Advisory Committee committed to one of those proposals before you start to negotiate. I don't know if that's 100% the way that it is or not. So.
Let's ask Joe Lengel. He's our attorney. What happens if we start negotiating with one of our, one of our bidders prior to accepting the bid? The motion does not include that, by the way.
Right. Mr. President, Council, so this isn't a bid, right? This was a best value process, which is a process that the city still will use, but the state often doesn't. And it's not the same as a bid process. There's more flexibility in terms of how that process works. And I'm not, and I wasn't involved in it. I'm not sure what MINDOT's requirements are with respect to that process. My understanding is they're kind of running the show on this in terms of procedure. But my, you know, off the, off the top response to that is if TAC has the ability to have negotiations, once they've decided which way to go, then I don't know why the council couldn't also have negotiations on it. Although at this point, obviously, TAC has made a recommendation, and that's what's on the floor right now, so.
Chairman O'Day, can I just clarify for the council? Have you clarified for the council? Your motion is based on the TAC recommendation. We're not altering what they've proposed.
The motion on the floor currently is exactly what the TAC has, has recommended. That's what came out of committee.
Good question, though.
Mr. Mayor, you have the floor.
That satisfies me.
Thank you. Any other questions of staff? Hearing none. I think we have a motion. We have a second. We've discussed it on end. I believe this is just a voice vote. I don't believe it's a resolution, but I'd like to ask for a roll call if we could. Administrator Bergman.
All right, Erickson?
Yes.
O'Day?
Yes.
Stunek?
Yes.
Johnson?
No.
Stengline?
No.
Bevins?
Yes.
It is a four, two, four, yes, two, noes.
That motion passes. Chairman O'Day, please proceed.
That's right. We're still on the SPW committee, aren't we? Okay.
Item number five is a little bit more lighthearted. This is the consideration of event parking lot closure for the application for the Concert for Kids. And this is an event put on by, what is our, Lakes Area Music Festival. The event is on August 7th, 2021, from 9:00 a.m. to 11:00 a.m. It is in the library parking lot, and it will be aimed at, for the kids. And the motion for committee was to approve the event parking lot closure application for the Concert for Kids.
Second.
We have a motion, we have a second. Any discussion? Seeing none, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign that motion carries. Please proceed.
Number six is a review of the event street closure application for the Here for Good Market. This wasn't necessarily in need of a formal motion. We originally recommended that the, the new farmer's market be put on Seventh Street between Laurel and Front, and we were gonna do a couple of weeks just to see how it goes, making sure that it wasn't disrupting business or having too many complaints regarding parking or anything else. And the event has gone great. We had the two, Marie Kirsch and Riley Fussy, sorry, she was married. What's her name now?
It's on the application.
Yeah, it's on the application.
Weber.
Riley Weber. Sorry, Riley. I know Riley. She knows I know. Anyway, they did a great job. It sounds like everything's going really well. So the original application was for the entire summer, along with the week of the Sesquicentennial Celebration in September. And we just went forward and approved that. But we did make a motion just to make sure we cover our bases. So the motion was to approve the original application for the farmer's market in downtown. And so if we want to, through council, ISO move.
And second.
We have a motion by O'Day, a second by Erickson. Any more discussion? Hearing none, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign that motion carries. Please continue.
Yeah, number seven is a, is a consideration of a State Park Road Grant application proposal from Wid Seth. This is an item that I received an email passed along to Paul Sandy, asking if there are any roads that we could use regarding the four million dollars that Wid Seth was talking about putting towards any roads, having to do with water access in state parks and things of that nature. So he came up with the idea to have them put some, put an application in for the Lum Park Road going down to our boat launch. It is a park that we know the Park Board is looking at a new master plan for. And it's a long road. And we're gonna have Wid Seth, if you guys want, go ahead and throw a proposal together. The cost will be about twenty-three hundred dollars for them to throw that together. But the motion was to authorize the attached proposal and enter into a professional service agreement with Wid Seth for the SPRA application submitted for Lum Park Road in a total amount of twenty-three hundred dollars. And ISO move.
Second.
Motion by O'Day, second by Erickson. Any discussion? Hearing none, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign that motion carries. Please proceed.
Number eight was a consideration for quotes for improvement 21-03, 2021, the Large Patch Projects. And motion was to recommend authorization of the quote for Knife River in a total amount of forty-eight thousand nine hundred and thirty-seven dollars and fifty cents for the improvement 21-03, 2021 Large Patch Project. ISO move.
Second.
Motion by O'Day, second by Erickson. Any discussion? Mr. Chair?
For anyone who doesn't know, these are, these are the large patch areas that aren't in our five-year plan, that are basically beyond repair by normal pothole filling. We budget about fifty, fifty thousand dollars in recent years per year. This bid came in at forty-eight thousand nine hundred and thirty-seven dollars and fifty cents to cover about twice as much as they did last year for, I believe, about the same amount of money. But this was a different company. This was the only bid we received as well, but we went ahead and motioned to approve.
Thank you. Any further discussion? Hearing none, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign that motion carries. Please proceed.
Yeah, number nine is another new issue. It is a consideration of the scope of services for the 2021 gully erosion study with HR Green. And coming out of, coming out of committee, the recommendation was to authorize, to enter into professional services agreement with HR Green for the Buffalo Hills stabilization project, and authorizing the amendment to MS4 program update with HR Green, as seen attached to this request. And ISO move.
We have a motion by O'Day, a second by Erickson.
That's correct.
All right, just a guess. Any discussion?
Yes, so as part of the MS4 project, and I'll, you know, Paul, if you, if, if I'm wrong here, you can interrupt me if that's okay with Mr. President. But we have a certain amount of money that is dedicated towards fixing our runoff throughout the city. And in investigating the situation, we found that we have a serious erosion problem between Carroll Lane and Ridge Drive, I believe it is, off of the north side of Buffalo Hills Lane. And it is a, it's a, it's a culvert, but it's collecting water from an area from our newer water tower all the way over to area of like Andrews Street. And it's a large swamp, along with all the street runoff. It's, it's running through the area where, where Sean is highlighting right now, estimated between thirty and forty, or maybe even fifty feet deep in certain areas, and just as wide in some areas as deep. There's trees caving into the area. It just needs a serious look. It's getting closer and closer to the homes surrounding it, as you can see right there. That's a pretty good angle. But we need a study done so that there is a project that we can apply for grants for, so we can get this done hopefully by next winter, when, when the ground is frozen and we can get big machinery in there without causing more damage. So instead of doing a citywide study on different erosion projects, which there are a handful of others, we want to make sure we take care of this one right before some of our citizens start losing buildings and more parts of their yard.
Thank you. Any further discussion? Any further discussion? Mr. Chair, I have one, and it's just a question I've been asked by residents in the area, is, is it possible some of this, some of this is based on additional runoff from the Buffalo Hills project? And that's?
We did chat about it in the, in the committee. Yeah, there was already a significant amount of runoff, but they did start getting some more calls, it sounds like, after the project was complete. But it either had something to do with the design that was in place for that, or the fact that we had some crazy torrential rains last year that did a lot of damage in other places as well, but none as significant as this.
Okay. Mr. Sandy, you have something to add?
We did not divert any more runoff from the Buffalo Hills Lane project to that specific gully area. A majority of the runoff comes from south of there, near Woodland Hills Lane, and like Mr. O'Day was saying, back by the industrial park. Our street runoff that was there already still goes to that same spot. But we did not divert any additional runoff. In fact, we sent it all to the Storm Pond on Ridge Drive.
Okay. So the second part of this question, Mr. Sandy, and it, I'm asking based on residents' questions of me, if that's the case, we have this problem prior to the street, why didn't we not address it when the street was all tore up? Is the question they're asking. That seems like a good one. So can you answer that so I can?
There is a big question over jurisdiction. This is an unnamed ditch that has, I think Joe and I have discussed this a few times, that has multiple sources of flow going to it. We're a very small portion of this problem in a much wider drainage area, and that is going to be part of this project, is identifying who is responsible for what amount of water that is going to this culvert under the roadway. Right now, there's a lot of residents that, that feel it's all the city's fault, that we're, all the street runoff is creating this gully. And I would venture to say that upwards of seventy-five percent of the stormwater runoff that we see go through that culvert comes from natural low-line wetlands. And the roadway provided a block and a culvert to channelize that flow to Little Buffalo Creek. And so that is the long and the short answer of it, is it's a problem, it's our problem, but it's also a lot of other agencies' issue that we need to bring into this.
Thank you. Any further questions? Seeing none, we have a motion, we have a second. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign that motion carries. Anything else?
And a report.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. We're on to, for SPW, we're on to item eight, which is unfinished business. This is a final reading for Proposed Ordinance 1516. This is the ordinance amending city charter brought forth by Administrator Bergman and Attorney Lengel. Anything you wish to add before we call for a motion?
Mr. Chair, members of the council, I would just say that the Charter Commission, as you know, has been working on amendments to the charter. Their first phase was really those items that conflicted with state law. The second phase, which is now Ordinance 1516, are those provisions in the charter that are not being done as written. So that, this ordinance does amend these. These recommendations did come from the Charter Commission out of their Phase Two review of the charter.
Thank you. So this is final reading for Proposed Ordinance 1516. Any questions of the administrator before we call for a motion? Is seeing none, is there a motion to hold the final reading of Proposed Ordinance 1516 and ordinance amending the city charter?
So move, Johnson, and also dispense with the actual reading.
Second, Stunek.
Yeah. And dispense with the actual reading. We have reading. We have a motion by Johnson, a second by Stunek. To dispense with the reading, this must be unanimous. Any discussion? Hearing none, this is a motion, so all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. That passes unanimously. Item two is a resolution to adopt Proposed Ordinance 1516 and ordinance amending the city charter. Is there a move to adopt Proposed Ordinance 1516?
So move, Johnson.
Motion by Johnson, is there a second?
Second.
Second by Ted Erickson, any discussion? Hearing none, Administrator Bergman, please call the roll.
Erickson?
Yes.
O'Day?
Yes.
Stunek?
Yes.
Johnson?
Yes.
Stengline?
Yes.
And Bevins?
Yes, we are done with one of three. Item B, 8B, under unfinished business. The final reading for Proposed Ordinance Number 1517, amending section 51566 on the transient food overlay. This is brought forth by David Chansky. Anything you wish to add to what's in our packet, Mr. Chansky?
Uh, no, Mr. Chair.
Thank you. Once again, we are looking for a motion to hold the final reading of Proposed Ordinance 1517, an ordinance amending section 515-66, transient food overlay district, and dispense with the actual reading. Is there a motion moved to, by motion by O'Day?
Second.
Second by Erickson. Any discussion? Hearing none, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. And that passes unanimously. Next, we're looking for a motion to adopt Proposed Ordinance 1517.
So move.
Motion by Erickson.
Second, Johnson.
Second by Johnson. Any further discussion? Hearing none, Administrator Bergman, please call the roll.
Erickson?
Yes.
O'Day?
Yes.
Stunek?
Yes.
Johnson?
Yes.
Stengline?
Yes.
And Bevins?
Yes, we are moving right along. Sixty-six percent done. One more to go. This is item 8C. Again, it's a final reading for Proposed Ordinance Number 1518, an ordinance amending Ordinance 812 pertaining to the zoning in the city of Brainerd, brought forth by Community Development Director David Chansky. Mr. Chansky, is there anything you wish to add to this ordinance?
No, Mr. Chair.
Thank you. Is there a motion to hold the final reading of Proposed Ordinance 1518, an ordinance amending Ordinance 812 pertaining to the zoning of the city of Brainerd, and dispense with the actual reading of the ordinance?
So move, Johnson.
Motion by Johnson, is there a second by Stunek? Any discussion? Hearing none, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign that motion carries unanimously. Item two is our motion to adopt Proposed Ordinance Number 1518.
So move, Johnson.
Second.
Johnson, second by Stengline. Any discussion? Hearing none, seeing none, sensing none. Administrator Bergman, please call the roll.
Erickson?
Yes.
O'Day?
Yes.
Stunek?
Yes.
Johnson?
Yep.
Stengline?
Yes.
And Bevins?
Yes, that ordinance is adopted. Item D, call for applicants. Mr. Mayor, I'd like you to take the ball first.
Are you sure, or?
You sat there so nice and quiet.
Am I allowed to speak now, or?
I feel I've had to hold you back.
Okay.
This is your time.
Well, this is a call for applicants. As always, the information can be found at our website. I'm not gonna bore you with the details of where that is. You can figure it out for yourself. Mayor recommends the following terms expiring 12/31 of said year. These are applications that we are in need of. Cable TV Advisory Committee, one term expiring 2021, two terms expiring 2022. Charter Commission, one term expiring 2022. Housing Redevelopment Authority, one term expiring 2022. Park Board, one term expiring 2024. Rental Dwelling License Board of Appeals, three terms expiring 2022. And Transportation, one term expiring 2022. As we flip the page, we find that there's another one. This expires on 9/7 of said year. That is the Economic Development Authority, one term expiring 2021, and one term expiring 2026.
That's it?
That's all you got for me tonight.
All right. And as council president, I have one opening on the Police and Fire Civil Service Commission. That is a single term to expire 2021. All right. And then as council president, I have one opening on the Police and Fire Civil Service Commission. That is a single term to expire twenty twenty-three as well as two positions on the Water Tower Ad-Hoc Committee. And moving on to item nine, which is new business. Item nine A is consideration of an ad hoc com- committee procedure. This is brought forth by Administrator Bergman. Anything you'd like to add to what's in our packet?
Uh, maybe if I could, Mr. President, members of the council, last meeting, we did talk about a potential for doing some kind of ad hoc committee. The council has had ad hoc committees throughout the years, but unlike boards and commissions, there really hasn't been a procedure or any guidance. Um, so we did discuss this. President and Council President Bevins asked that council members provide me with any feedback they might have. I did do some research on what other cities did as well as received some comments from council members, and then I did review this with Attorney Langle. The procedure is on the second page of that attachment. It really talks about the purpose, the length of the term, the committee membership, um, meeting dates and times, organizations, and really what this does is kind of formulate what our ad hoc committees will be. Um, and one of the things that in my research, I found that most cities actually create these committees by resolution. Then the resolution will clearly lay out what the specific issue is that the council would like to be addressed. As you know, we currently have three ad hoc committees. We have the Parking Committee, we have the Water Tower Committee, and Walkable, Bikeable. Um, our recommendation to council, should you approve this procedure, is that we would bring back those three ad hoc committees with a resolution at a future city council meeting. Happy to answer any questions. Um, and that is it, Mr. President.
Any questions for Administrator Bergman?
Yeah, just clarif-
Johnson.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Mr. Chair, just kind of clarification of what Jennifer finished up there. We will be taking staff is going to take the three ad hoc committees whom already exist and bring a resolution to the council to give these committees direction or to have the council get rid of them if we see necessary. What, what, what is it staff is going to be doing with the ad hoc committees who already exist?
So I think at least for the Water Tower Committee, for sure, there is a definitive purpose for that committee, and that's to raise funds for the Water Tower. I think that could easily be brought back in the form of a resolution. I think the Parking Commission, the initial objective by the council was to review the, the BN lot and look to see if there's a way that, that there could be a balanced budget. Um, I think the Walkable, Bikeable Committee may require a little bit more discussion on what the council would like to see that committee doing. Um, just a comment, I did call all three chairs of these ad hoc committees, just letting them know that this procedure was being, being brought forward. Um, and all three chairs were very much in support of having some kind of direction by the council. Does that answer your question?
Yes, Mr. Chair, thank you.
Thank you. Any further questions of Administrator Bergman? I have one. There's that fourth committee that you, we tend to want to ignore. It was formed with a six to one opinion of this board. The, uh, myself being the, the one dissenting vote, that committee is still active. We received a report from it after three years this spring, and it's the Conduct on Premises Rental Housing in Relation to Rental Licensing Committee. Uh, I know, um, I know a couple of members, but I'm sure the minutes will reflect all of them. So, um, so that's that. Any other questions of Administrator Bergman? Hearing none. We're looking for anybody who'd like to make a motion on this. Uh, the obvious one is to adopt the ad hoc committee procedure.
I'll move.
Motion by?
O'Day? Second, Johnson.
Second, Johnson. Any discussion? Hearing none. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed, same sign. Motion carries. Let's keep rolling to item number, um, where are we now? Item number nine B. This is, uh, looking forward to setting a council workshop for Monday, July twelfth, twenty twenty-one at five P M. Has been suggested by Administrator Bergman. You can see in your packet, this is to discuss zoning code update and the lively property south of Brainerd. Any questions of administer- anything you want to add?
Nothing, Mr. President.
Okay. Anybody want to ask any questions on the agenda, the date or the time? Otherwise, if Chairman O'Day?
Just if six o'clock would work better than five o'clock.
Oh.
Whoa, boy, you're, you're, you're.
Some of us got to work during the day. Some of us got to work.
Staff has some issues.
Oh, I'm fine. I don't care. Don't, don't make it a habit.
Only on Mondays.
Okay. Excellent point, Chairman O'Day. Any other questions, comments on the agenda, the time, the date? Mr. Mayor?
My, my only comment is that is our first playoff game in baseball, and we will be making the playoffs, so the mayor will probably not be.
So five o'clock would be better.
Five o'clock would be better for me, but
I win again.
I would have to leave. Either way.
If you want the mayor's opinion.
Right, we, and we can't let him talk anyways. Okay. Anything else? We're looking for a motion to have the, set the council workshop for Monday, July twelfth, twenty twenty-one at six P M. In chambers.
So move.
Motion by Stunek.
Second, Johnson.
Second, Johnson. Any further discussion? Hearing none. Uh, just a reminder to staff, there's two items on the agenda and two items only. Okay?
There's one baseball?
No. No. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed, same sign. That motion carries. Item ten is the public forum.
Mr. President?
Yes.
Before we go there, I believe we had a notice in the paper for a public hearing on the charter amendment, but it was not on the agenda. It's not listed in the agenda.
Thank you.
So I'm going to ask that the council go back, open up a hearing for the, for the charter amendment to make sure we just cover that base.
Thank you very much. So this is item X. Thank you.
Theresa, you're sleeping over there.
This is item eight A on proposed ordinance one five one six. This is a ordinance amending the Brainerd City Charter. We'd like to take public testimony if there's any to give. Is there, we will open the public hearing at eight forty-seven and ask if there's anybody in the public who wishes to speak on the charter amendment. Ask a second time, is there anybody who wishes to, uh, help me out? If there is?
There's one call in user. If you have star three to raise your hand or star six.
Okay, so we have a call in user. Call in user, we are asking for commentary on the charter amendment only. If you wish to speak to the council on this, please hit star three and that'll let us know that you want to speak on this. I'm not seeing it. Okay, that'd be star three if you're online and wish to speak on the pro- on the ordinance that's already been adopted. I'll ask for a third time. Hearing none. We will close the public hearing at eight forty-eight. And thank you, Mr. Langle. I don't know, Mr. Langle, if you know or Tiffany knows what the procedure would be if somebody, if we wanted to change it. Just commentary. We all voted on it. It was unanimous. But what if there was commentary that might change that vote? What would happen procedurally? Would we have to undo our vote?
Yeah.
You'd have to rescind it then. Okay, and then start over. Okay, because these things occasionally happen. Okay, so I just, if you're listening, that's what would happen. All right, next up, thank you again, Mr. Langle. Item ten is the public forum. This is the time allocated for citizens to bring matters not on the agenda to the attention of a council. Time limits may be imposed. So if there's anybody either online, on the web, on the phone, or in the room that would like to speak on something we haven't discussed yet tonight, now's your time. It is, you can, please come up, state your name and address, and as long as it's not something we've talked about tonight, let us know what you think.
Uh, my name is Justin Grisulile. I live on Eighth Avenue Northeast. Um, I'd just like to bring to the council's attention the width of our roads. I live right on the corner of Eighth and Q with the park right there. People come zooming by all the time. It's designed to have parking on both sides. Um, even to that design, it's too wide. Um, the standard now is twenty-four to twenty-eight feet wide for a two-lane road with parking on both sides. After looking at it, it's a citywide issue. Our cities are designed to a standard of thirty-five feet, as I talked to Paul Sandy about a while ago now. So I'd just like the council to research and maybe look at narrowing, narrowing the streets when we do redesigns. Not only will it increase safety, it'll reduce costs and reduce runoff, which you guys were talking about earlier. And that's really all I have is I'd like it considered to have the roads narrowed for safety reasons.
Excellent. No, no, it's a good thing. Thank you for coming and letting us know. Certainly, you've talked to the right people. Now, the good, the bad news is we don't do all the roads at once. So it might be, it might be an overtime thing, but thanks for coming.
Yes.
Okay, anybody else either online or, or in the, um, in the room that would like to speak on something? If you're online, you hit star three, and that's kind of like raising your hand. We can see you uh, do that online, and I'm not seeing any. I'm not seeing any more in the room. So it is nine fifty-one, and I will close the public hearing and we will move.
Eight fifty-one, sir.
I'm sorry, eight fifty-one.
It feels like nine.
It's eight, it's eight fifty-two now.
If I'm here at nine fifty-one.
Now that you're dragging this out, what, you got nothing else to do?
If I'm here at nine fifty-nine, we got an issue.
Administrator Bergman, we're going to start with you.
Thank you, Mr. President. I have nothing to add.
Thank you. We're going around the room this way to our H R Director, Chris Hubert. Anything to add? Nope. Attorney Langle? Community Development Director Chansky?
Just, Mr. Chair, that the Planning Commission is holding a workshop this Wednesday, June twenty-third at six thirty P M. In the Fire Department Training Room.
Thank you. Engineer Sandy?
Uh, thank you, Mr. Chair. Uh, so the Park Board, uh, will be having a budget workshop on, uh, July sixth. Um, that's the Tuesday, off Tuesday that they don't meet. Um, and then we have a park board meeting tomorrow night, so not too much on the agenda, but if you're interested, stop on in. Northwest Forest Street, we're putting curb down again today, and we'll be maybe paving by the end of the week, so. But with the state shutdown, we don't know if our signals are going to get done, so.
Connie Hillman, Finance Director?
I would just like to thank everyone, um, of the staff for helping with the audit. I couldn't do it without them, so thank you, everyone.
Excellent. We've got a couple of guests from P U C. Any of you have anything you wish to add during the staff reports? None. Uh, I T Director Strong? And over in the corner, Chief Police Chief Bestel?
Mr. Chair, I got nothing.
Oh, yes, you do.
Other than that, yeah. I'll let you start.
Can I cut in on your report a little bit? So if you haven't seen, we received a letter, and I'm going to quote Chairman Johnson from P N F, "Dang, it's always good to hear good news." And this is a letter I received from a, from a family that I've known here in Brainerd for over thirty years, um, the, the Byes. And it's written to Chief Bestel, and if you've got just a second, there's a lot of news and uh, police departments take a lot of burden right now in, in the media, and when we get good news, we really want to share it. And we have a great police department, and I know they work very hard, but this is to Chief Bestel. "I want to compliment your op-" and I hope you don't mind me, I'm going to read it in its entirety, but it's quite short. But I want it to become part of the record and part of the media record. I want to compliment, compliment your offers, uh, your officers as to the procedure they used in assisting my sister. This is regarding a traffic accident on Tyrell Drive. "Her safety and treatment were their first concern. A tourniquet was applied, patient was stabilized and determined if she was coherent. This was done until the ambulance arrived, very professionally done. Their next job was to determine what happened. They sorted out the individuals that were knowledgeable and listened to their observations. It was a hectic scene, many onlookers. The officers were professional, courteous, and concerned, while still doing their investigation and not disturbing the patient. Uh, the next day, the Lieutenant Coulter showed his concern by calling and asking the status of my sister. Once again, going the extra step, thank you, and please compliment your staff. Sincerely, Conrad and Carol By." So thank you, and thank your staff, because really, you have a great team with a great leader, and this is the kind of news, as to quote Gabe Johnson, that we need to hear more of. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. President.
All right, that's the end of the police chief's report. Now, we will move on to the mayor's report. That's enough.
Yeah. I move up here and then I can't speak. Uh, just it, it, a few quick things. First of all, narrowing of roads, yes. I'm pro narrow roads. Uh, I hope the rest of the council feels that way as, as well. Narrow the roads. Uh, second of all, the, uh, Here for Good Market, just wanted to make a comment on that. Uh, it is looking really nice down there, and, uh, we at Community Action have had an opportunity to participate as well, and, uh, very happy to see what's going on there. Love seeing the type of activity that is happening in our downtown, um, but these creative ways of using the space, I love it. So, uh, hooray to everyone involved in that. And then just lastly, uh, for those that are interested, there will be an event in Gregory Park this, uh, Sunday from ten to four. That is Arts in the Park, and, uh, you can come see yours truly as well as a bunch of artists who will be offering their wares and goods. And we'll have some, uh, music there as well, and it should be a very good time. Hope to see you there. I know I'll see you there.
You will. End of report. Thank you, Mr. Mayor. We'll start down on this end, uh, with Tad Erickson.
I'll just give a brief update on the sober home discussion. Uh, last, uh, meeting, the sober homes came before the council with the question of, you know, what can we do to potentially regulate them? What's, what's done? Um, council talked about it. I had a lengthy discussion, wanted the Planning Commission to take a look at it, um, which we did on the, we had our meeting on the sixteenth. We had a very lengthy, uh, in-depth discussion. Um, it's a complex issue, and, uh, what we've done, uh, the Planning Commission, we really put together some findings of fact. Uh, there's some questions that we need assistance with. Council, at our last meeting, authorized the Attorney, Attorney Langle to, uh, provide some resources. Um, I don't know if legal advice is the right term, but, uh, provide some resources to the Planning Commission to help us answer some questions about um, what can be done, what can be, could be regulated, um, provide some other examples from other communities. And so again, Planning Commission put together a list of questions that we have to kind of identify what could potentially be done, if anything, um, to, you know, uh, potentially regulate or, or not. Um, these sober homes that are kind of cropping up throughout town, providing a wonderful service. We had the hearing or opportunity for, uh, members of the public at our first Planning Commission meeting, and so we heard, you know, opinions on both sides. Uh, but just wanted to provide an update that, um, Planning Commission did discuss it, put together some findings, um, and some questions for both staff, um, and Attorney Langle, um, who will be bringing those answers back to Planning Commission, and then of course, Planning Commission will be providing a recommendation back to council. I would anticipate, although not guarantee, probably July, uh, maybe the second meeting in July. Have more action on that.
Can I ask you a question on that, Ted?
Yeah.
So I, I know, um, uh, Planning and Zoning Chairman Duval asked, is that, that's his name, right? Duval asked the, the commission if they were interested in investigating a moratorium on sober houses, and they declined to do that. Can you address why that was, why they declined it?
Yeah, so you're, you're correct. Um, Chairman Duval did bring that up. Um, I think, and I can speak for myself on this as well as the, the way that the, the commission voted. Um, I think essentially sober home, this was addressed back in twenty seventeen, wasn't identified as an issue from both Planning Commission and the council. And now perhaps that's changed. However, we didn't feel that we, we felt it was a little bit reactionary to put a moratorium on it. And that's me speaking personally. If this was a, a dire issue that was needing to be addressed, we would have been proactive and had something in place. And now, you know, to put a moratorium on it, we are investigating it, so we didn't want to put a moratorium on it and be reactionary in that sense. And personally, again, I felt like that might just be, uh, I guess the city flexing its muscles just a little bit too much to, to say, put a moratorium on it. We're not allowing this use while we figure it out. You know, and I use the example, we're updating our, our zoning code, you know. You know, and I use the example, we're updating our, our zoning code, you know, to what extent would we do that? Would we put a moratorium on, you know, everything? That's an extreme example. But again, that was kind of my, I didn't want to be reactionary, and I didn't want to come off too strong against that, so...
Okay. Thank you.
End of...
Yeah, thank you. Go ahead, Mr. O'Day, Chairman O'Day.
I really have not much to add tonight, other than I wanted to add on his comments of, of the downtown farmer's market. I was out of town this, this last weekend, and a lot of times when I'm out of town, I look at what's going on in other cities and see if there's stuff there that we could implement here. And I just so happened to walk down the street in the morning, Saturday morning, and I was downtown. They, surprisingly, unbeknownst to me, closed down five blocks of their main street and had thousands of people just over the hill at a farmer's market. And it sounds like our farmer's market is doing really well, and they're already growing and gaining more and more vendors, so we don't even have five blocks to close down, but if we can bring even a third of that to ours on a, on a regular basis, I think that would be great. So I'm just cheering those guys on.
Thank you. I just want to tag on with what the mayor said regarding Arts in the Park. What a thrill it is to have that back. We missed it last year. It is, if you've not been, it is an absolute hoot. It's crazy. It's worth the twenty minutes to find a place to park. I've lived there for thirty-five years, and I really missed it last year, and I'm glad to have it back. Chairman of PNF, Johnson?
You can park at Kelly's driveway if you really can't find it.
He's going to go somewhere to park. We got parking spots.
We'll do anything for a buck.
Thank you, Mr. Chair.
We're going to put it towards sesquicentennial banners.
I, I have three items. One, I thank the citizen for coming forward on the city street width.